I'd like to see a part of this call, both.
Here.
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 T J Walker.
Here.
Dontris.
Here.
Ayers.
Here.
Devon Swartman.
Here.
All here. This time I'll raise the side of number four on our agenda, which is considerations of minutes of regular scheduled city council meeting, which was held on February thirteenth, twenty three, three, looking for questions to approve the minutes separated.
Seven voting, set.
Questionnaire against the former inspector by councilman Paul Fisher, thirty per session. Hearing none on the paper, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so. Mr. Reynolds? That was Councilman Walker, I'm sorry, my apologies. Alright, that brings us to item number five, work about consideration additions or additions to the agenda. I've been asked to consider approval, item nine J, for consideration for the nine month lead. That's your word, that's Councilman George, let's see there.
Yes, thank you, City Manager, and the Council that we're all looking at, taking that off tonight, that we have opportunity not only to look at, item nine, but look at that, looking at that corridor, to help other squares on the avenue going forward. So we thank you, that gave us a chance to come over and lead this one.
Thank you. Also been requested to remove items nine H and nine I, from the considering that can be answered out and voted on as separate items since item number thirteen and fourteen were used in them. Are there any other additions or deletions that should be considered?
Yes.
Item nine.
Consideration for the D, um, for the Ayers, really gray Ayers, and municipal stadium, national border, for number seven.
D, could we pull that out, so? Pull it out separately, yes, item nine D, pull it out separately.
Great, thank you.
Well, what about item number eighteen, that one for you?
Yes.
Okay, do you know their additional deletions? I would entertain a motion to make the adjustments that I suggested.
Tell me.
Set it.
Questionnaire against the walkers, second by councilman Paris. Is there need for further discussion? Hearing none on the paper, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so. Okay. Okay, this time I'll turn the meeting over to our City Manager, Pete Rogers, to give us the media.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to remind the community that this Wednesday, the city is hosting an open house and job fair from ten a.m. to seven p.m. at the Rocky Mount Event Center. And this event is ideal for residents who are looking for new career opportunities or seeking to expand their professional network. As we stated, there will be prize drawings as well as employment opportunities. Also, would like to share tonight, the Juneteenth Community Empowerment Festival takes place this downtown, this weekend. And so we have a video highlight that we'd like to share this evening.
The Juneteenth Community Empowerment Festival in downtown Rocky Mount runs for three exciting days, June sixteenth through the eighteenth. Come out and be entertained, inspired, and empowered by an impressive lineup of performers, speakers, vendors, and more. The first night kicks off with a block party, featuring the Earth Wind and Fire Tribute Band. On Saturday, more music, headlined by Mr. Talkbox and Marcus Anderson. And Sunday is a full day of praise and gospel music, headlined by Luther Barnes and Hezekiah Walker. Get the full list of details at downtownrockymount.com.
And finally tonight, I would like to remind everyone that the next Downtown Live will be happening on Thursday, June twenty-second, on the lawn at the Imperial Center, and it begins at six p.m. And this month's band will be North Tower. Thank you, Mayor, that concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Anybody have any comments or questions for our man? Okay. Moving along, we'll come on to presentation Lions Club, Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year, Plankton Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. Thank you for the opportunity of coming and fellow citizens of Rocky Mount. I'm Dr. Bob Cameron, I am President of the Rocky Mount Lions Club. And every year for the past, and I'm sorry, I don't actually know how many years, something over thirty years, I believe it is, the Rocky Mount Lions Club has presented a Police Officer of the Year and Firefighter of the Year Award. These awards are nominated by their departments and voted on by all their peers. So this is not something that, uh, sorry, Chief, the upper brass go through and say, we're gonna pick this one. But this, they are voted by all their peers and elected as the Firefighter of the Year and Police Officer of the Year. So it is my great honor to ask Fire Chief Drury and Firefighter Pearl Sprole and his wife to come forward. Chief Drury, if you want to make a few remarks.
I can say nothing about the country, the country, the House of Representatives, he's a professional individual, he certainly articulates the real forces provided to our department, he's an outstanding reporter as well, he's a role model for this model, I can reference.
We have a letter from the Lions, Captain Pearl Sprole. On behalf of the Rocky Mount Lions Club, I want to congratulate you on being selected as Firefighter of the Year. Your selection demonstrates the highest esteem in which you are held by your peers. As citizens, too often we fail to recognize the protection services that you provide. Rocky Mountain is lucky to have dedicated professionals like you in our fire department. We thank you for choosing service to the community as your profession. There is no way we can compensate you for the risk we take on our behalf. But I hope this small token of our appreciation will let you know that you have our thanks and support. And I'm gonna let the chief, with that reply, sit.
You want one word, please, it's not what it means.
Chief Hassel and Corporal William Mayfield and his wife. Again, congratulations, Corporal Mayfield. On behalf of the Rocky Mount Lions Club, I want to congratulate you on being selected as the Police Officer of the Year. Your selection demonstrates the highest esteem in which you are held by your peers. As citizens, too often, we do not recognize the protection services that you provide. Rocky Mountain is lucky to have dedicated professionals like you in our police department. We thank you for choosing service to the community as your profession. There's no way I can thank you for the risk you take on our behalf. But we hope this small token of our appreciation will let me know that you have our thanks and our support. Chief Hassel.
Thank you, Dr. Cameron. There's a lot I could say about Corporal Mayfield, but I would let the citizens that are here know that he is a sixteen-year veteran of the Rocky Mount Police Department. And it was no surprise to me for him to be selected by his peers as a twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three Officer of the Year. As a corporal within our agency, you know, officers, you have the formal rank structure, sergeants, lieutenants, you know. But it's those corporals, like Corporal Mayfield, that me and our officers look up to and they go to for guidance when they need help. And for me, as a chief, Officer Mayfield, it simplifies our core values, which we expect from all of our officers. Fairness, integrity, respect, and those of every citizen and those who visit our great city deserve. So I also thank you for, not only your service, but for being recognized as Officer of the Year.
Thank you very much.
Bob Cameron, I want to thank you, the Lions Club, for coming here tonight, celebrating our law enforcement and, you know, empowerment as well. So again, Captain Sprole, Corporal Mayfield, congratulations on the scene on item nine. That brings us to number eight on our agenda, which is our petitions to receive from the public. And so the public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment. And the city council appreciates, attends, and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. The city council values all citizen input. And this is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer it out to the city manager or staff upon one. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak. And speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that assignment sheets must be presented to security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. And if an organized group is present to speak on any topic issued, please have a committee of one or two present the group's comments. Your comments in regard to an item that is subject to a public hearing, please wait until that item is entered into speech time, will also be monitored. Your comments in regard to an individual hearing, additional time may be granted. The city council requests that you please adhere to the following guidelines. Complete assignment sheet, address comments to councils in whole and not to individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argументative and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you'll be asked to sit down or be removed from the meeting. Keep comments to three minutes. This time I'd like to invite Robert Cordell to the podium.
We are office, city council members, and other platform personnel. My name is Robert Cordell, and I live at thirty-two hundred One Blue Road, in Rocky Mountain City, on the right, the center of it all. There you go. I've come asking for, um, three items of consideration. The first is a song, uh, to be repaired or replaced at senior wire. The senior citizen needs a song, the senior citizen wants a song, and it will help our overall health. And it shouldn't cost that much to repair or replace it. If you need a petition from the senior citizen at that summit, I can get that for you. The second item is, on the car registration, we have an NASH county tax, and it's going to count as tax if you stay on it, it's going to count aside, a Rocky Mountain tax, and a Rocky Mountain garage tax. I'm asking the senior, uh, city council, will you please consider eliminating this garage tax? Uh, Wilton tax, you know, we're paying one of the highest size taxes in the whole nation. And you receive state, local, and federal funds. And so this one tax can be eliminated, that I don't think you all could admit, so asking you to eliminate that tax. And the third and final thing I'm asking you to do is rename, uh, East Thomas Street and West Thomas Street, to rename the street to Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Every major city in North Carolina have a Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, uh, so why not us? As you know, Dr. King was here one time, he spoke, um, at their home on West Thomas Street. He had dinner with the Stokes home, uh, recite the Book of Washington, uh, there, no, Book of Washington, the Jim. And he had the first I ever drink speech done at the Book of King. As you know, he's worthy of this recognition, and if you need a petition for that, will require a lot of work, but I can get that. Would you point to three blocks, the thirty-six benches, the one hundred eighty-four housing units, and the five churches that are on East Thomas Street, sorry, to West Thomas Street, educate? Please consider, uh, renaming this street. And question is, who was West Thomas Street named after? Was it Thomas Jefferson? Hopefully not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cordell. I'd like to invite that term to the podium. Is this in relation to the budget? I don't have a public hearing on that later.
Yes, it is.
If you'll just wait till the public hearing, portion of that probably makes sense. Um, I'll invite, uh, is it Barney Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman, and City Manager. I'm here today to say I have my department and environmental service put down another hell one on today, you know, same pretty thing. These are the fellows I work with on a daily basis. I'm not here, like I said, I got to be here today, but this is a serious matter. We didn't overlook as far as the budget, police department got there, the fire department had there. Soon, it's gonna be gas, it's gonna be electric, we still on the background tax. What we propose is, why not, we get a pay increase on our annual salary of twenty-five percent? We can't say it's not in the budget, because everybody else got a piece of that pie. But like I said, we, we take that and sell it like anybody else. Nobody else wanna put the trash up for you, it piles up, and, and, and they, and they see this, and people in this, in this room here, see every day, they glad to see that trash get out of front of your house, they sit there all day and not, and not be picked up. City manager, you got, you got opponents, why not us, we, we, we share, we all share the board here. We feel that we are second class to every department here. I'll do you out between each one of you and come up with a solution. Expeditions, not waiting too much long on that. We've been, we've been here before, I've been here by myself, captain time, but I thought my whole department, that's a show, that's a show, y'all. What's really going on out here? These guys, I go, I go these guys every day, and we do a good shit, good, good, good job for the city. We got fans, we got support, you know, we got deals about anybody, rent going up, groceries going up. Like I said, some of them gotta take second job, just maybe answer me, and, and that's the same, and it's better than that. So I'm gonna tell all the work to go, to try to do something, we speaking for ourselves, we don't have anyone speaking for us, we don't have anybody heads coming up and speaking for us at any time. We got to take action for us, just consider that. Now, consider the small ones, like I said, my little king spoke up for us, for sanitation. He gave advice for that, and y'all should do the same, just for help. Do the right thing, I'm not gonna keep breaking up, I'm gonna tell you that, the people see that, just do the right thing, brother. And I appreciate that, and thank you for listening to this. And like I said, Mayor, we invite you, the city manager, invite you to come out and talk. We wanna see you, we gonna ask you for it, come down and see us, let's talk, let's see what we watch, and I enjoy it. And I appreciate y'all, let us speak on this at that time, thank you.
Thank you for talking. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I'd like to invite William R. Harrington to the podium, please.
My name is Charlie Creo Harrington, or most everyone call me by Creo, but my name is William Harrington. I'm here tonight, I passed out maps and deeds and everything to open up my ballpark. For the last two and a half years, I have been fighting with the school board. I haven't, haven't come to you guys, this is my first time coming to you guys, you know. Uh, I got a, I gave each council member a copy of the map, which lays out the ballpark. I got an email the other day, which gonna tell me that they are coming to the city because, uh, a portion of the land wasn't deeded in. But if you look at the deed that I gave you, every portion, every acre of that baseball field is deeded into that deed. There's no leans, there's no nothing on that ballpark, but I keep getting runaround from everybody that I go to. Uh, in the meantime, I'm getting ready to file a lawsuit against Nash School, okay? Uh, I have a, I started this process in twenty-twenty-one, January of twenty-twenty-one, and what's this, twenty-three? And I still don't have the ballpark, okay? Uh, they have given, I bided a hundred and five thousand dollars on that ballpark. What they did was, they brought in Nash County Holding, which is a part of the Mills, and I bided it. Okay, I couldn't go to a brother in a black house, okay, I have three partners, I have two bankers, and I'm a nonprofit organization, we're called Entrepreneurs of Tomorrow, okay? Our goal was to bring baseball back to Rocky Mountain. I was gonna have a collegiate team, I was gonna have an intrapenetrative team. It would have been two to three games played at the stadium every day, okay? I was gonna teach entrepreneurship to the kids and all this that was coming in here, I was gonna do a group. Kids, uh, my younger group was gonna be from twelve to sixteen. My older ones was gonna be from eighteen to twenty-five, Chris. You're looking at money for the city, if I got two teams and I got twenty-five off this, only, uh, on these ten plus two managers, you do the math, okay? We need houses, we need houses, okay, and everything else. And I know it would make the city so money. When I played baseball in Booker T., I was the back boy at that same ballpark in the sixties, okay? I'm seventy-five years old, and when I came back to Rocky Mountain to do, when I got back here, I worked with the Parkland League for us for a short time. Then I have a travel team, we are called Rocky Mountain Wildcats. We have been from Florida to Chicago. We have won championships in Florida, South Carolina, Chicago.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington, Thomas, thank you.
Hey.
Please. Mr. Harrington, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm pointing at the convention, I'm just, we have the maps, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Harrington has a chance to get around to what his question was for us or not, but I wanted to know if we can at least get his, his question to us. That's how they do it, of course, we will sometime, you get just to a thirty-second sound bite, or what they ask is?
My question is, the portion of land that's, uh, that's in, they're talking about, is in between the armory and the outfield fence of the ballpark. They're saying that's not on the map, but if you look at that map, that's outline, that is deeded on that map. That's deeded on the map, I've been to Nash and got the deeds and everything else, the map on the ballpark and everything else, I've done my work.
So, Mr. Harrington, you're saying that our vote tonight's really, that this all belongs to the Rocky Mount or the Nash County School Board?
Actually, they're saying that you guys got to deed that land over there, looking for a quick deed of that, it's not even an acre of land. It's two point oh, oh, two point something, you, you'll see it out there, that's what they're saying. You know, you know that walkway between the baseball field and the armory, that leads from Howard Street back over to, uh, Gobber Street? And you're, that's what they're questioning, they're saying that the city never gave them that. But in nineteen seventy-seven, when the city council, and then deed that land, gave that land to the school board, everything was included. If you look at the deed that I have there, you will see that it is.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Harrington, yeah, question just, like, councilman, like, oh.
Yes, sir, so if we have, um, that's, that's part of the reason we asked this legal, because I was unclear. I knew that there were issues related to that, and, um, from a legal perspective, I know that all of these corrections that you've given, the reasons and all that, it's supposed to survive what this is. So they saying, is the school, what is the school board saying to us, and have our, has our legal department checked out?
That would be a question, Mr. Rogers, not Mr. Rogers.
Look, the, the school board is saying, I guess based on a survey that they have done, that there's a piece that was left out, and the city conveyed the municipal stadium and exchange for the, uh, the same old school, and seventy-seven, I believe.
So it's not the whole amount, it's a portion, but it's, uh, point, oh, it's one oh, it's four two three eight.
If you look at your packet, and this might be the time we, we talk about the subject, but if you look at your packet, you can go to the map, it seems to be, it's right in first, is what's in green, um, page fifty-nine of, uh, the PDF that we received. Which, which is right behind, according to what Mr. Harrington gave us, right behind the, uh, house on eight fourteen Alpha Garre Street, if I understand correctly. on eight-fourteen Alfa Garre Street, if I understand correctly. It's just, are you on the page fifty-nine of the?
According to the survey, of the school board, it might add, so it's not a portion.
So, does that, does that invalidate the entire deed, or is it just that portion question?
No, no, just a point-two-three-eight.
So is it?
That is property that is owned by the city, according to the survey, I guess. I didn't survey it, but the city did not hire the survey. But if the city does in fact own that piece of property, yet to give it parts of all the field, should have been, and it's a little, a little portion that I don't think we want to own.
Yes, Councilman Ross.
Let's speed now, wait, to that item. The reason why we were asking, I asked that that item be pulled off the consent agenda, because it seems as if something is not right with the bidding process, which has nothing to do with what we're talking about indirectly. It does, because it is correct, well, Mr. Arrington and Mr. Clinton are saying, the school board discriminated against these judgment, and I don't want to vote on anything until that matter is cleared up. They were placed a bid after the city of Rocky Mountain dropped out of the bid process, the bid was open for twenty-nine days, and allow a billionaire company to get in to outbid these young men who don't have deep pockets to compete. If that's true, then that's a problem, and it's not fair, and it needs to be exposed. That's the reason why I'm hoping that the city would ask our city attorney to request a public record request in reference to the bidding process, so that we can see if those to the mass board, or the school board, denied their public request.
Thank you. Councilman Ross.
I just would like to wait till we get this item, so we can have a full session, maybe.
All right. All right, I like that. Let's move on, and invite Joseph Joseph to the podium.
I'm Edith Joseph, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Little Raleigh Community Association, and accompanying me are some of our concerned members from the Little Raleigh community. As Vice President, it is my honor to make you aware about community's plans to move forward, and to request your consideration and support as we embark on this journey. Once a thriving community in Rocky Mountain, once a community that was always on the leading edge of progress, Little Raleigh today is but a shell of its former self. That sphere of pride that formed the foundation of an all-American neighborhood that anyone would feel blessed to live in has been muted from years of neglect. This is our cry for help. The community as a whole, and especially those of us who have been fortunate enough to be a recipient of generational wealth, have organized and made a commitment to rebuild and to revitalize our community. We will provide as many resources as we can, but we will ask you for assistance along the way. We are taxpayers and would like to see our taxes at work in our community. Our first step, our first step, our community association has begun adopting the streets of Little Raleigh to clean up our community literally. As it turns out, street cleaning builds bonds faster and more long-lasting than months of meetings could do. We believe that the community that works together grows together. We are planning educational programs to educate our community about voting, homeownership, entrepreneurship, and a multitude of programs tailored to give our community the tools needed to lift Little Raleigh from the debts of degradation suffered over the last several years. For your first step, we request that you maintain and good repair all city property that is located in Little Raleigh. We also request that you require those conducting business in our neighborhood to maintain the properties in which they have an interest. That means that relatives should be checking on unoccupied properties for rent to ensure that they are not becoming local ducking grounds, and they are kept in good repair. We request that you encourage the desired behavior by doing everything within your power to penalize and continue disregard of our neighborhood. Little Raleigh is moving forward. We are going to do our part, we are going to ask you to support us as we forge forward. We ask that you see us, we ask that you hear us, and finally, we ask that you respond to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilman Blackwell.
I just want to thank Mr. Joseph, thank Little Raleigh, this is not my award, it's a councilman's walk us forward, but it just sort of underscores the conversation we just had a few minutes ago, that it needs, that we need to, from our, from many of our perspectives, it takes the majority to make anything work, but that we need to hire individuals to target communities that are intercity, core city communities like Little Raleigh, Happy Hill, Meadowbrook, others, both for development proactive, and then to also to decode enforcement, and perhaps people who can help us navigate these creative opportunities to invest in our neighborhoods. If traditional developers not gonna look at us, then we gotta go develop ourselves. We can't wait for someone to rescue us, we gotta rescue ourselves. So I just wanted to use this as a prime example, that we're in sync, and I believe most of us were supportive of it from a concept. We talked about it a lot, y'all, we wanted to take back and listen to our community on conversation. So thank you so much for coming in, I think that better than three minutes than we did an hour.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Walker.
Yeah, to the Little Raleigh Community Association, thank you all for building up the courage and the strength to come out tonight. I know it's challenging, thank you all for coming, and hopefully, this is the last time we have to come, and we'll get to work and make sure those changes are done. Yeah, thank you for your courage, and for coming.
That's the part, yeah, not the last time, but they need to keep coming, and everybody else need to keep coming. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Jordan.
Thank you so much. I know that all of our communities work to community, share regards that you just shared, and we too look forward to putting help there to help our community receive goals and objectives that they have laid down.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Luma Shai to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, today slavery is repackaged with low stagnant wages to oppress and exploit a pool of cheap labor. This is modern slavery, reflected in the paltry wages of public works employees, sixteen dollars eighty, sixteen dollars eighty-three cents an hour, thirty-five thousand a year. With inflation driving up food, gas, housing, and healthcare costs, this is the low-wage group that is forever struggling to cover their basic needs, long-term driving them into debt. A combination of inflation, stagnant wages, and debt has produced a poverty crisis in Rocky Mountain with dire consequences: blight, homelessness, food insecurity, home foreclosures, and of course, crime. The request for a ten percent across-the-board increase for these overworked and underpaid folks matched with strong and immediate pushback, reason being, it needs an additional one million in the proposed budget. Underpaid equals underprivileged and undervalued. Increasing the pay rates of law enforcement and first responses by thirty-six percent and twenty-seven percent respectively, and denying a ten percent increase for this poorly paid public works employees is morally reprehensible. They deserve a living wage too. Rocky Mountain...
Officer, I might have to ask to clear this at some point in a minute, please, I must be respectful, but please stop, please. It has to be respectful to speak, or like here, I plead a freedom of speech, I think it's important, I think it's important that everybody's here participating, but I'd like to ask that everybody please maintain some semblance of order in the council chambers. Shai, please.
Thank you. Rocky Mountain employs highly-trained professionals for public works, for a range of vital services to safeguard the lives of humans, animals, and their environment. They are the guardians, they are the guarantors of public safety. You are safe walking uncluttered road sidewalks, parks, and in your neighborhood. You are safe from disease, air and water pollution due to improper management of trash and disposal animal carcass. You are safe from contaminated water flooding the city and your community, to name just a few. Rocky Mountain is livable, clean, sanitary, comfortable, and safe because of these low-wage city workers who toy in all weather conditions. They deserve a living wage, they deserve what they ask for, twenty-five percent. Raise their depressed wages, pay them like you cannot lose them, pay them and show them that you appreciate their commitment and their dedication to their work. They are worthy of any amount that is in the proposed, any additional amount in the proposed budget. Remember when you were so eager to spend twenty million for an urgent judicial center? Nothing is now more urgent than to spend an extra one million dollars to improve the lives of these low-income public works employees, the backbone of essential services in Rocky Mountain.
Thank you. Thank you. If we can never return. I did, I did like to, I did. Really, one more hour, so I have to ask, let's go to the chamber. I am very, very, very excited, I was here, participating is very important. At the same time, in conducting the meeting, it makes sense if we can just maintain some control. I clearly understand that your ears support is all you stand up, and I think that's awesome, for real, Dick, and we're hearing the message. But at the same time, I don't want to trick this, if it's a game show, who can generate most excitement, you know, regardless of what the issue is. So please, if I can ask you to social form, thank you. This time, I'd like to ask of this Mary Warren to vote. This Mary Warren.
Good evening. My name is Mary Warren, I live at three-eighteen Emerald Avenue, and I come here tonight to address the issue about the Dollar Jumper. We, the community, do not feel that this, our community need this type of store in our neighborhood. We are working to transform Southeast Rocky Mountain community, and I understand all the concerns about the city wanting to do something with that kind of audio section, we've been talking about that for years, but I feel right now, and so many people that spoke out in our awards meeting, that we don't need a Dollar Jumper at this particular time. What I believe, if we, the community, we are getting ready to do a cleanup, cleanup of our community, and I believe as we move forward in Southeast Rocky Mountain community, and as the city grows, we will not have a proper line of business to put on that land, but if we took Dollar Jumper, that opportunity now, we are not gonna bring, they are not bringing the quality to our neighborhood, and I just feel like we need to wait and give the community, and give other businesses the opportunity to bring something of value to the Southeast Rocky Mountain community. I've been in that community for forty years, I saw it die, and I now see community on balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Councilman Jordan.
Sir. Say, warn our community that we not only hear you, hear our community, and as Councilman Blackwell said, we have in our closed session, and not closed session, but our council will hold, address these issues, and looking at how we can respond to these corridors in our community, looking at them as a whole, and not as individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. This time, I'd like to invite Reverend Nehemiah Smith, Jr. to the podium.
Evening. First, I'd like to say I don't understand how important for what's right is our warning. Anyway, anyway, in a world that often places high value on positions of power and prestige, it is crucial for us as a city to adopt a new perspective. We must recognize the worth and dignity of every worker, regardless of their role or status. Let us commit to valuing and appreciating the contributions of low-level workers in our city and for our society. May we strive to create environments that recognize the work of these fellow citizens. One of the ways we can demonstrate our value for low-level workers is by ensuring they are paid their worth. Fair and just wages not only provide for the needs of individuals and their families, but also acknowledge the significance of their contributions. When we compensate workers fairly, affirm their dignity and acknowledge their efforts in doing what many may refuse to do. The city of Rocky Mountain must strive to create a culture that values and compensates all workers equitably. We just don't have it, Reverend Smith, we don't have the resources. It's not that you don't have the resources, you don't have the desire. Don't tell me what you can't do. When you wanted an event center, you built it. When you needed to remove a racist monument, you found the money and you brought it down. When you needed property for broke, you took it. Where there was disrepair, you fixed it. When the city needed a fresh look, you rebranded it. These men need to be fairly paid, that means that you're going to pay them. May we be agents of change, advocating for justice and equality in the workplace, let us treat all workers with respect, affirm their value and acknowledge their efforts in doing what many may refuse to do. In this way, we reflect the heart of Christ, who came not to be served, but to serve. Twenty-five cent, twenty-five percent across the board before you implement the new system that you're gonna vote affirmatively on, on the twenty-sixth, and then we'll go from there. But I'll be back.
I'd like to invite Ms. Nellene Richardson to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something briefly? So, that's okay, I was trying to reserve my comments for the budget section, so if anybody talking about increases or changes to the budget, they can stay, hang around, and not leave when public comment is over, so you can participate in that discussion as well.
Okay, I'd like to invite Ms. Nellene O'Ree to the podium. I'm sorry, Nellene, I probably got ahead of myself.
Um, please excuse, I'm talking, I had a lung surgery today, but I'd like to say to all of the city councilmen that has come out for our love war, I would like to say thank you very much. We made a lot of connections with different people, and we are working with them to bring some change in our communities. And for any city councilman that has not been able to come, we would still love to reschedule and be with you. We understand when you have other things ahead to come up. But I would really like to give a special thank you to Mr. TJ Walker, City Councilman. He spent the entire day with us Saturday, introduced us to some very great people, and we have really made a love connection. And we have other things that will be coming to each city councilman and mayor. I talked to Mr. Walker about some of the things that we plan to do in our community, and the things that we want to see come, so y'all will get, and by the next city council meeting, y'all should have it on the agenda, because we plan to keep coming in the name of love, and we expect to see our mayor and the rest of these city councilmen out in our... the rest of these city councilmen out in our communities. We are also doing voter registration, so you know what that mean, elections are coming. And we expect to hold each and every last one of you accountable for us. And that's all that I have, and I'll be back.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to invite Ms. Nellie O'Reilly to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, and City Councilmembers. My name is Nathalie O'Reilly, and I live in the Meadowbrook community. And I am here advocating for the sanitation workers to get increased pay from our budget. And, you know, I'd just like to thank them, you know, for the beautiful jobs they do in the Meadowbrook community. They keep the park looking good, keep the streets looking good. I've been participating in the love walks, and we could walk down clean streets because of our sanitation workers. And I would just greatly appreciate any efforts that the city council could make to give these people a well-deserved increase, because I know it goes in my garbage can. And when they come to pick it up, I don't hear no complaints, nothing's left, it's out the streets, up the garbage can, they put it back where they get it from. And sometimes I've seen the trucks come through with just one person. Used to three people. One guy drove the truck, and two people jumped out on each side. But now, one truck come, one guy, and he's got this little automatic thing, I don't know how he does it, but they keep doing it over and over and over very consistently for fifty-two weeks a year. And I am thoroughly impressed, and I pray that you will acknowledge their efforts with a raise. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Reverend Moore, I appreciate everything the sanitation department does do. I'd like to invite Mr. Thomas Fancin, Reverend Fancin, to the podium.
Good evening. Reverend Fancin, you're about thirteen ninety-one pounds, I'm going to call him. I was listening to conversation during the committee of the whole week about businesses. Same, some of the same conversations since the late eighties, early nineties, when I started attending this meeting, and nobody up there has been, you know, part of their term. We go way back. None of y'all was on council. I was vice chair of the incorporated back then. City workers, I still would like workers for justice back then. Here again, they still fighting. Hey. C.D. Doherty, C.D. Hall was county commissioners, and at that time, you got three revivals up there now, but back then, you had three revivals, back in the late eighties, early nineties, Reverend Thomas Walker, Reverend Joe Horn, Thorne, and Reverend Jerry Spoor. I go way back. Some of this stuff y'all talk about, you know, you just homeworks if you know where you came from, where you are. These guys come on board, and you, I remember all of them come on board. But I just think a lot of folk, my second cousin, her dad is my, her dad is my dad's grandmother's sister. You can't let everybody know what's going on back then, so I didn't let nobody know. And so, I got a lot more careful people, surprised who they are. But yours is no longer. She's fighting across the six and four, still fighting out there now. So, this is nothing new. Like I said, C.D. Hall and Dennis and C.D. Doherty, they were businessmen. They, look at what they put in out there. Kingsbury, Steve Hall got campaign. Look at all the stuff that C.D. Doherty's doing. I don't know about it up here, black, that got that kind of resource. Y'all fighting about it, but just keep on fighting. Maybe someday somebody will come in and put some businesses on Edgecombe side. Now, I'm here representing Edgecombe County Democrats, disappointed, elected as the chair of the first-class chair, didn't want to take it, get my head. So, I'm coming here to hold my Democrats, three of Edgecombe County's Democrats, and one national, one affiliated. So, I'm here to hold you accountable, all of you, but especially my Democrats. And I come, I get this out of pocket, so I can record stuff, so I can let my folk know when I send out emails, let them know what's going on. And so, I'm here, living in Rocky Mount, been working here for thirty-six years, it's home for me. And I said, vice chair of the, been to all county community meetings over here, been in life fully-paid minimum in WACP. So, if anybody got a question why I'm up here, because I love people. I support my folk that are here, and I support the friends and the idiots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nellie. I'd like to invite Mr. Francis Williams to vote.
Also, good evening to Mayor, Council. Development, what does it really mean? Is it the process that creates growth, progress, positive change for physical, economic, environmental, social, and demographics that will advance in our communities? Maybe for some development means for any organization whatever strong at us that we're supposed to accept it, that we're supposed to settle. Where in the world did we get this settlement mentality for the problem? Of course, there are people tonight talking about the sanitation workers shouldn't settle. I applaud that effort, means that we don't have that settlement type of mentality. Yet, for over years, since two thousand eight, I've seen this council talking about poverty, getting rid of, eradicating, and looking at health disparities, looking at educational opportunities, et cetera. But then, what we moved in today was bringing the Dollar General to our community. After we had many meetings, and rich folks said, take it, got into meeting, and it was said, it's a done deal, there's nothing that you can do about it, so just take it as it is. But yet, we'll go around and say, if people should hear the voices of the public, we'll go around and say all this great stuff, especially if we're looking for others. But the reality is, people matter three hundred and sixty-five days a year after your election time. I would hope that there's community engagement when it comes to what these taxpaying folks wanted our community. We don't elect kings or queens, we elect people as servants to help us move our community forward. That is our role, that is our responsibility. And when the land was owned, and still is owned by the city, to have the thought process that you're going to bring in a poverty-praying business like the Dollar General, that speaks against the cultural values that I believe this council has. Not only will I work to hold Democratic and Unaffiliated, but Republicans too. All of us have our responsibility. But again, as Pastor Smith talked about, I've seen this council do development when you built the event center. I've seen this council do development when you revision the Douglas Block. I've seen this city council do development when you built a sports complex. So, I know you know what development is. How in the world does this thing get on this agenda for tonight? That is the question. But I hope that as I live, that we'll never see it happen again. Let's not bring poverty, uh, prey type of businesses in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'd like to invite Troy Davis to vote.
Sanitation workers, I hear you. Ms. Joseph, I hear you, if you're still in the room. The other day, when you came by my office, I didn't have a chance to speak with you. But I hear you. Southeast Rockin' Mount, I hear you. Little Riley, The Hilltop, all these communities are neglected, and it's neglected by policies that part of this council, and just the city of Rocky Mount as a whole, has neglected the citizens of Rocky Mount. And I say that to say, we have houses that was torn down, that the city of Rocky Mount failed to collapse, collect demolition fees that are sitting around, and we can't even collect, because it's been past ten years, the statute of limitation has expired. But the citizens won't ever know that, because their elected officials won't tell them. Taxes that are due. We have a house on Falls Road, the roof is collapsing, the lights is on. What type of hazard is that? I wrote down Nelson Street the other day, I think it's three, three, three Nelson Street. I don't think taxes been paid in a while, the roof is caving in, but we have a community development department that's giving out money, two hundred thousand dollars on a house on Branch Street. Two hundred thousand dollars to go one single house. That is absurd. It's clear, Mr. Williams, I don't think this council knows what development is. They know how to spend their money recklessly. We need to hold these elected officials accountable, and we need to make sure they understand what development is. We have vacant lots, we have boarded up homes. That is how we eradicate light in our communities. And I'm going to hold this council accountable to do just that.
Thank you, Ms. Fancis. Okay, that brings us to, yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Mike.
The comment was made about the council draw this Dollar General, to be put on the agenda, that is not true. And here was, whatever words you use, I'm Mr. Peter Barney, it's not wrong to hear. We heard the morning show, well, not the morning show, W N C R, people called Mr. Joyner, and explained to him, but Mr. Joyner, Councilman Joyner, is not to be blamed for neglect for the last hundred and something years. We are not to be held responsible for what people who came before us have not done. It was this council that was told that we could not tear down those silos that was contaminated, had been there for years. Mayor Turner just told us we couldn't do it, but we did it. Tip-top bakery sitting across from Little Hope, which is now Foster Memorial Church, for years blighted. Drug hate. It was this council that took the initiative to tear it down. This council instituted minority women business development, because we had less than one percent of black contractors in this city participating in millions and millions of dollars of your tax dollars. It was this council, this man that says community wealth building. This council that brought Dr. Jim Johnson in to talk about wealth being built in our community. It takes a long time to catch up with a hundred and twenty years. It was just getting here. Twenty years, fifteen years of blinking my eye, of planned development of infrastructure, roads, highway, water, sewer. It was the blockbuster, and those that came before us that left the houses in our community that now dilapidated the downtown. We didn't own nothing but Douglas Block, but this council, well, the council before this, this council decided to save our history, to bring the core of Rocky Mount back, because it wasn't like Mayor Bobby said, our downtown was on Winston and Bibby New Boulevard, and tried to chastise Ruben Blackwell, and we said, no. Downtown is right here in Rocky Mount, Main Street, Tarver Street, Washington Street. It was this council that when the mayor said that you were a person who wasn't a real developer, we said, we believe in you, and we're going to, like my mother said, hope you with your dreams and your vision. It was this council, when this city hall didn't have two blacks, and now it's mirrors this population, I'm going to cut it off, because, you know, we're talking about the courtroom, and somebody's preaching, but this young lady that comes down and talks about, you're exactly right, and it's hard not to clap, when you hear a speech such as that coming from a city, or such as a speech coming from the late Dr. Martin Luther King, and those who came before us, because it resonate down in your soul, and it makes you want to say hallelujah when you're in church, but in here, we can clap. If we can clap for a baseball, football team, we can clap on the truth. Now, I'm not trying to grandstand, but it was this council that had a serious discussion. Don't attack us for what we're trying to do, to help us go back, read the record, read the minutes, read the newspapers, see the TV show, read the blogs of who they call names about property, help social welfare. Edgecombe ain't no good, y'all thugs, y'all nobody, y'all welfare queen. It's not us. We're trying to pull our people up. Don't blame us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Mike. Anybody else care to speak? Okay. That brings us to item number nine, agenda, consent agenda. I'd like to remind everybody that item nine J has been removed from consideration. Item nine H, I think, will be voted on as items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. So, with that, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda with those exceptions.
A little bit.
All right. Councilman Mike, hit motion, second by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Here are none, better, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like sign. Item passes. That brings us to, to vote on those. Item ten, this is a public hearing, relative to the public budget that was signed this year, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. This time, I'll open the floor to anyone who cares to speak from the public related to the proposed budget for City Rockin' Mount, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I'll call you, Mr. Hep Turner.
My name is Hep Turner, and I live at five hundred Atlantic Avenue. I'm not a public speaker, and I'll have to read these words, but it is my voice. An inventory of the historic homes in my neighborhood has never been taken. Inventories of all the white areas surrounding Central City have been taken. The three white inventories were taken twenty-five years ago, and they were then included in this city's together tomorrow by comprehensive plan, but not my neighborhood. No inventory was taken, and it was completely left out of both the preservation plan and the comprehensive plan. I'm asking you tonight to please budget money for an inventory and preservation plan for my neighborhood. The inventory should have been taken twenty-five years ago, but it wasn't. I just walked up the bridge. But it would be a crime to once again exclude my neighborhood from the city's inventory and preservation plan, and then move forward with another comprehensive plan. In a budget meeting a couple weeks ago, Reverend Joyner voiced his concerns about whether or not the proposed update to the city's comprehensive plan would in fact be inclusive. I'm here to point out to you a simple fact. Without an update of the city's inventory and preservation plan, the city's new comprehensive plan cannot and will not be inclusive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I have, I'd like to leave the council with this call to ask, if I might take my action, and I have copies that we leave the councils. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there any other member of the public here wanting to speak to the proposed budget? Yes, sir.
Again, good evening to you. I want to speak to the budget. It's a memory, as I've been reviewing, the budget since two thousand and eight. Uh, again, good evening to you, I want to speak to the budget, uh, and remember, because I've been reviewing budgets since two thousand and eight. Uh, so this is the first time I've seen the budget laid out the way that it has been, that's laid out, I would, I would say, uh, great in the design, presentation of the particular budget. I know Ken Hunter and staff, so I'm sure we've been working hard, a lot of the managers worked hard to, to make that happen. Uh, but it gave a sense of just vibrancy, just looking at how it was displayed. Uh, you saw on the front page, the budget where it gave consideration to the fire department, the police department, et cetera, uh, and, and, and others. Well, I will say about the budget, I, I do, as I've been talking for years, about updating our comprehensive plan. I was excited to see that there were dollars set aside, uh, for the comprehensive plan, also dollars set aside for downtown, um, and, and like the housing, there was housing plan, uh, for the other. Uh, a- at first, I saw the amount of money that was, the city would be receiving from interest income, I said, wow, that's a lot of money, but I, I, I realized that, uh, those, those members seem to bear, to be true, that was consistent with what the edge count count is projecting, and their particular, uh, interest income for the dollars they have, um, as well. Lastly, um, while we understand the concerns of employees with the city, uh, if the council can, can find that, uh, those dollars without an increase in property taxes, wonderful. Uh, but I do know that you have to live within your budget. We understand what needs are of citizens, as everyday people such as myself. Um, it's also trying to work, uh, within a budget. Um, but, but the way, of course, math is, it ain't so much twenty-five percent, so thirty percent, so sixty percent uh, once you give, when you got a hundred percent at the end of the day, we want to speak realistically as well. Um, and, and are there other ways to show appreciation, uh, from bonuses and things of that nature for staff retention? Uh, they can also, you know, I, I, I don't know, but what I do know is I don't want this council to vote on the property tax inquiry, so that's what I do know. Uh, a- as, with private, I have in around the building, uh, a city. So, so those are things, because again, councils don't make money, right, you get it from taxpayers, you get it from grants. And I understand the hard work of these men and women every single day, that, that's not, that's not to be disputed. One thing I don't like is, is for those to be called, uh, the lower total bill workers. I believe that everybody's high in the total bill at the end of the day. And so if that mean, if that means you have to change the messaging as to how these people are received in our community, uh, for our staff within the organization structure, then that's an internal conversation that needs to be had, as to how you can show appreciation for all workers, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other member here from the public?
My friend and I, uh, we agree to disagree on this. I believe that, uh, if you're gonna call them essential workers, pay them like essential workers. If that's what you're gonna call them, pay them that way. Find the money, like I said, you find money everywhere else, find the money for these men and these women that work hard every day. And if that means, hey, that you got to raise the property tax, so be it. Because these people deserve to be paid. They do a great job in this city. We find the money for everything else, find the money for them.
Thank you. Any other, any other member of the public here wanting to speak to our budget? Yes, sir.
Once again, my name is Mrs. Orie, and I just have, um, a re-question regarding the hiring of another assistant city manager, because we do not want anyone to get burned out when everybody just, you know, have their fair share of the workload, and if there are any considerations being made for them.
Mr. Turner, is there a public board, uh, just standing there?
Yes.
Praise God.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please, please come forward.
My name is Anthony Copley, Pastor Anthony Copley. First of all, I want to thank you for not increasing the taxes this year, nor the next year. I pray to God that you won't increase them on our taxes to make up for what you have done this year. You have given the police department a thirty percent, thirty-six percent rate. You have given the fire department twenty-seven percent. And you, now, ten percent, I still just don't think it's enough for our sanitation workers. Because I may not be using the right term for it, but they are the lowest part of our total power, but they should be at the top of our pay. Because they are the ones that keep our city clean, and I have never ever had a problem with them. They're always right on time. They're gentlemen even in our community, men and women. So let's consider, in this budget, at least a twenty-five percent pay raise for them, because they definitely deserve it. I believe that if you find the money for everything else, you can certainly find the money for them.
Is any other member of the public here wishing to speak as it relates to our proposed budget? Any other member of the public here that would care to speak on the proposed budget? Here it is, I'll close the public hearing at this point in time. Please, this item number eleven, yes, sir, Councilman Blackwell.
I want to speak.
Yes, yes, please, of course, of course.
I haven't heard anything tonight that I cannot support. I'm a hundred percent behind looking at the value of our essential workers. Um, I agree with, uh, Mr. Smith, that if you say somebody's important, you're supposed to show it, and but I also want to say, we need to understand what the process of budget is too. There's a misconception that the city council makes the budget. We do not create the budget. The budget is created by the staff. The city council sets the priorities. The staff reflects those priorities and how things are budgeted. What, we don't create one spreadsheet, one numerical, we do not set the value for anything. We respond to what's given to us. Now, we can say, as a council, that our priority is public works, and I also include in there the, uh, the folks who work in parks and recreation, because it's one and the same. You know, you're cleaning up ditches, you're clearing properties, you're making sure that our neighborhoods and our streets are safe and clean. And, uh, you do it without, um, complaining, and you do it regardless if it's a hundred degrees outside or twenty below, you are there, and we appreciate you. And, um, you deserve to not be taken for granted. That being said, uh, we have a manager, he has a team, and so, if it's the desire of the council, as reflected by our accountability to the people, which means you, then it's up to them to bring us something that we can build on. I want to be real clear about that. We do not create budgets. So, that's a conversation. My question, and we had, uh, committed a whole, I think, last month, I asked the HR department, are we certain that the supervisors and department managers really understand how to do appropriate, um, evaluations so that you all are being rewarded fairly all along the way? That's a head shake, that means something. That means something. I want to know, do we have classes of importance in the city of Rocky Mountain? Some people consistently receive an exceptional outstanding, and other people receive a meet standard, meet standard, meet standard. That's where your money is and how you get evaluated. And that's what, that's what builds sustainability within a budget, is that you don't have to go across the board and give everybody something one time, because bills go up, things go up every day, cost of living goes up every day. So to me, there's also an equal pressure on how our leadership is leading in each department. How are you being evaluated every day? And are you being fairly compensated? Now, in our budget, um, I've been told that we have a comp plan. And I'm not clear about what the comp plan is, because we haven't seen it, we've heard about it, but I don't think we've seen it. So I would hope that we would see the actual document, or at least a summary of the document, so we're clear, um, that the positions that we are voting on and, uh, taking a position on are in alignment with what the will of our community is. I've also been told that the comp plan study does not cover every single position, that's what I've heard. I don't know that. I don't know that, that's not my lane, that's not my lane, I'm trying to stay within it. But what I do know is that fairness and equity and treating people right is everybody's responsibility. That's what I do know. And our budget should reflect that. So, um, also saying is that somebody stated clearly, you know, we have to, um, manage what our priorities are. And if our priorities aren't value our people first, and then our projects second, then we need to think about where our priorities and projects are. And it doesn't mean that we have to cut everything in the inner city and then pay people right. That ain't right either. So I would just say that, um, you know, my perspective is that I do support, and this is just Ruben Blackwell, I'm not speaking for anybody, I'm speaking for myself, that I do support, um, an increased target specifically to folks that everybody else takes for granted and looks over. And without having our trash and our recycling picked up every single week, if we can't value you, then we don't value ourselves. So that's my perspective about that.
Thank you, anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, Councilman Knight.
Um, thank you, Councilman Blackwell, and regardless of budget, I know our uh, pay comp studies in our budget, uh, but I would ask this council, we would pull that out until we get uh, the information of the, uh, pay and comp study. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, when it up now was the pay and comp study, and this is why the council didn't pass it, because all the employees were not going to get a raise. And that's when we decided to do a four point five, uh, percent across the board for all employees. Uh, this year, uh, and also in twenty twenty-one, uh, the comp study included environmental service, water resource, as targeted areas for additional increases. And this appeared to be eliminated in this, uh, pay and comp study, because we only focus on fire, police, and energy resources. And so I asked that we pull that out, and I have, uh, two more pages of, of, of concerns in reference to that. And one, one I do like to say that, uh, in twenty twenty-one, increase, uh, the minimum wage paid to fifteen dollars. Now, in twenty twenty-three, we increasing the minimum paid to sixteen eighty-three. And when we order up, uh, how many employees would this be affected by this increase? Uh, other, I'd like to, to point out with this upsetting, uh, I'll bring that back when we, we discuss the budget again. But I think the council will need to see what are the ranges are, what positions are, and, uh, how, and what employees are going to be making. Uh, yes, I stood with sanitation, I stood with parson red, fire, police, all our employees. I value all of our employees, I'm quite sure the council does as well. Uh, but I, I, I want to say, um, I mentioned, someone mentioned twenty-five percent increase uh, in, in, in my, uh, comments, uh, at our last council meeting, I said ten percent and left our parson red. Um, we have a lot of employees who we have left out, not we, any backup. Uh, with our manager made the bold move, uh, we made, um, the city, local news, state, private news, and national and policy numbers affect, and it was thirty-six percent increase, and no one, I don't think is going to go against our police department, because we want, uh, we want to be protected uh, in this community, and they deserve, you know, exactly what they got. Uh, so is our fire department, which I believe is going to be twenty-seven percent. We appreciate what you all do, very dangerous work, won't take nothing from you. Uh, but we also have to look at all our employees from our sanitation department, parson red, our water meters, uh, readers, all our clerks, because they're all valued employees with this city. So we have to task, uh, Brother Blackwell, he said we don't create a budget, but we can direct our city manager to go back and adjust the budget and to consider uh, what we have heard. If the council don't direct our city manager to what to do, we can't say it's not in the budget. We manage three people, city manager, the clerk, and the attorney. The city manager managed all of you all, which is staff. But this council got to give our city manager direction to vote for thirty percent, twenty-seven percent, we got to say, as a council, we want to see sanitation, of the works, parson reds, whatever else, get a percentage before the pay and comp study. I don't know how we gonna do it, how, how you gonna do it, you know, without paying what the city paid. But we got to figure it out and give him a direction on what to do, Mayor and council members. We have to get him in that direction. We have to say what we want him to put in the budget, am I wrong? I'm asking my county, am I wrong?
That's what I said, I said priorities.
That's right. We church, we said, look at the neighbors, the neighbors, am I wrong? Am I right, Mr. Lawrence Dalton?
I, I feel confident that, uh, we will make things, uh, work, and, um, we've got to work within, we've got to work within the, the monies that we have, so we'll see what we can do, and I think we have more talking to do.
Thank you, this is what I want to hear. So, you're all listening, we have more talking to do, but we move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else have anything else they'd like to add? Yes, Councilman TJ Walker.
Thank you, everybody for coming to sanitation, uh, men and women, and for everyone for being here tonight. I would ask that, uh, we haven't, I think, Councilman Knight just said, we haven't seen the, uh, comp study, so I would ask that we look at that first to make sure it is where, because we're making a lot of, uh, comments now without seeing the details, so let's just make sure to see the details um, that our manager staff has sent before us. Um, we're hearing all the comments, and they have moved from there, because, uh, I think Councilman Knight is asking to report it before we, uh, before, but we haven't seen it yet, so I think we'll look like I have seen it first, and then move forward, um, because I, I think our last manager's situation, I won't guess it's twenty nineteen, but we did not give the, we did not approve that comp study. And so, um, we made the changes need to be made, but we need to make sure we look at the details and then move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir, Councilman Dalton.
Um, I, I agree with, uh, Councilman TJ Walker, and, um, I would also like to say, um, city manager Keith Rogers is, is here, um, we hired Mr. Rogers because he's a, he's a, um, competent uh, city manager, and he's going to move our city forward, and if we cannot move our city forward, he cannot move our city forward without the staff, qualified staff, well-paid staff. I say this because I, I have full confidence in our city manager. And I know that, that things will be, um, he, he has to make decisions on, on what to do with staff, and I think it, it's a difficult thing, because everybody wants more. Heck, I want more, I'm in my own business, I can't pay myself more. But I, I say that because we got to work within the budget, and it's also, um, I've I've had a few talks with the city manager, and part of it, and, and so has the rest of the city council, we've also heard about opportunities for advancement, and I think within, um, I think our city manager is not able to speak for you, Mr. Rogers, but I feel confident there's opportunities for advancement, where maybe in the past, there has not been that, we talked about it, um, when We talked about it when we were presented in the committee of the whole, was that two, two committee of the halls? So I say that because it's more than just a dollar today. And I'm not trying to make excuses, but we got to, we got to work within. And I can't make excuses. I don't know what it is. But I feel confident, and I want it to be, it's everyone to go away. I feel confident. I see major session here.
Thank you. Councilman Turner.
Yes, let me thank the city council, Mayor, city manager, staff. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight to express your right and freedom to express yourself. I hope that our managers in these departments will understand workers expressing themselves at this level. Also, as a council, we appreciate our citizens for coming and expressing your desires to us as well. And all of us have to agree to hear each other and do the best we can for each other as we move forward and not to victimize each other in any way for expressing our thoughts and belief. And I think if we do that, then we'll meet those goals and objectives, not only today, but in the future to come.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Martin.
When I said pull the big comps that I was talking about, if we approved the budget with that item in there, that we should have a copy of it so we can look at it and not just pass it. Because when we pass it, then anything can go in there. So I would like to see that if it's a line item in the budget for that, it's to remove it. If we don't get it before we vote on the budget, so we can know what's in the Paying Comp Study.
Thank you. Question. With that, we'll move on to item number eleven, which is consideration of minutes and reputations from planning board view, which was set on May ninth of 2023. This time, I'd like to motion to acknowledge the receipt of the planning board minutes. So motion by Councilman Turner, seconded by Councilman Javaris Walker. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. That brings us to the public hearings relative to the following rezoning request recommended for approval of downed compliance with comprehensive plan by the planning board. So Presley Shield Stanley partnership, the rezoned two parcels contain plus or minus point three two acres at eight oh three Carter Street, five six twelve North Tillery Street, from I one to E five. So she'll want to have the staff to speak to this force.
Good evening. Joseph O'Cook, Interim Director of Development Services. This rezoning request was recommended for approval by the city's planning board at their meeting last month in May. The area is, the property itself is presently zoned white industrial. The request was spurred by the desire for the owner to redevelop the property with some of the standards that apply to the white industrial district. Specifically, the required building setbacks may redevelopment of the property prohibitive. So staff recommended approval and planning board has followed suit to redesign this property as commercial services or U top district. Happy to answer your questions you all have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Cook?
So, yes, sir.
From my, yes, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, so there is an interest in redeveloping the property or they can give us?
Yes, sir. Reusing the property. The, except the building setbacks and the I one zone, apart of, I think, seventy-five feet. The property itself is on fifty feet wide. So pretty much eliminate the possibility of any redevelopment of her own site.
And the property owners are leading development. They just want to prepare the property for redevelopment?
I believe they want to reuse the site.
Yes, sir. Something is up right here.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? All right. Well, at this time, I'll open the podium to anybody, member of the public who cares to speak to this particular issue.
Good evening. Mike Thompson with Mackey Associates, just here on behalf of the property owner tonight. And just to answer any questions that you have. Don't really have anything to add to Mr. Cook's presentation. Just if you have any more questions as an agent or the other.
No one else, yes, sir. I think I lost some. So can you, can you give any just an overshot or overview, big picture view of what the vision of the property owners are?
So the property owner is trying to acquire more properties in that block that would kind of alleviate the situation, but he hasn't been able to tie a lot of those down. He's currently working on developing cell storage out there, mini storage type approach. But I'm not sure of the long range plan of what he's trying to do, but that is the current use that he is trying to develop. And he's got another couple of properties in the vicinity that he is using that for.
So it's more pure business, so there's no housing at all?
Not at this time.
More pure business. Okay. So we would trust that if they rezoning curves, that we work with the planning department to ensure that's appropriate and.
They developed a plan and.
Any other member of the public here who cares to speak to this particular rezoning request? All right, here now, I'll close the public hearing at this point in time, and I'll receive a motion to adopt ordinance. So, as I was saying, Councilman Blackwell, seconded by Councilman Turner. Is there a deeper discussion? If you're not all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Item twelve is consideration of a resolution requested by city council response to Senate Bill one sixty-nine. I'll receive a motion to adopt resolution as I read the motion. Motion made by Councilman Turner, seconded by Councilman Dolphridge. Go ahead, Mr. Dolph.
Would you all mind if I read this in public?
Please.
I'll remake the sign. This was, first of all, our city manager sent a letter to our legislative representation throughout Rocky Mountain, Edgcombe, Nash County, as well as to the mayors within Nash County and to the Nash County Commissioners regarding this, and then also from last meeting, said one about Senate Bill two forty-eight, which obviously did not do any good, and then also about Senate Bill six seventy-five. But this is about one sixty-nine. And whereas the city of Rocky Mountain has legal authority pursuant to North Carolina statute, one sixty-eight dash fifty-eight, proceed with satellite annexation. Now, I just lost it. I apologize. Should have printed. Whereas there was a request by mayors of Nash County, Board of Commissioners, and local delegation to revise pending legislation to include provisions requiring the city of Rocky Mountain, as well as other municipalities in Nash County, to provide prior notification of and receive approval from the Nash County Commission in order to proceed with our existing legal authority as municipalities and regarding satellite annexation. And whereas the city of Rocky Mountain is within its authority to approve satellite annexations by petition, allowing property owners to exercise their individual property rights to include their parcel or parcels with the city in the language included in S B one sixty-nine fundamentally violates the inherent rights of the city as a municipality in the state of North Carolina to administer affairs within the context of current state law. Now, therefore, you know, technology is great sometimes, but in this particular case, it's not. But anyway. The reason I wanted to read it is because basically the Nash County Commissioners would like to, for to get, for the city of Rocky Mountain to ask for approval anytime there's a satellite annexation. And this city council, by vote from last time, although you had two city council members that were absent, but they fully agreed after I've spoken with them, goes against everything that is, that is what is provided us by law and acting as an independent form governing this city. And so we're doing this to let our legislators know the word against Senate Bill one sixty-nine.
Councilman.
This is Ben Boom.
The vision of the bill was originally sponsored by Senator Barnes. It was attached to Senate Bill one sixty-nine that had passed the Senate, and it was passed over committee of the House, and it stuck in House Committee of the Month.
What I'm saying, I agree with the resolution. But I want to ask this question because when other bills were being created and was trying to get it to pass into law, we had council members working with Lisa Barnes, Senator Barnes, on certain bills. So I'm asking our little saintly people who publicly stated that they was working on S B four seventy-three, are you working on this with Lisa, Senator Barnes? Also, is our Senator, House Representative, Mr. Chestis, he working? What is his position on that as well? And so what I'm saying, when we, or some of us, work with those who have an agenda to move us backwards and then create another bill to stop progress, then we should recognize that. We should recognize that. So I just want to ask, Mayor, are you working with her to not do this?
I tell you this, Councilman, I know I've been on the forefront, but I just can take the piece of the resolution.
Thank you. Okay. That's just what I want to know. Because when we, as the council, make a stand, we have to be united. And these bills, the bills that they are passing, aggressive laws to end the Rocky Mountain, not just this bill, but several bills, we should be united on all of them. And that's all I got to say. But I do support the resolution.
Do you have a motion to?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I could open up a discussion after we've got a motion on the floor. But if you'd like to speak now, please do. I'll recognize you.
I just want to say very quickly, I was the one that did not vote for the annexation. But I want to go on record, this is an extreme overreach by Nash County Board of Directors. And I one hundred percent agree with this resolution. This is the responsibility of the city of Rocky Mountain, the other municipalities within Nash County. And Nash County Board of Commissioners did wrong in wanting this amendment adjusted or added to this bill. And I'm glad, Mr. Mayor, that you followed this and you followed it very hard. Thank you.
It's not over yet, John. But I will retain a motion to motion, maybe, Councilman Blackwell.
Second.
I'll be, I'll recognize you. Okay, well, I saw Blackwell, but I'm good. Yeah, Blackwell and Turner made the motion. Seconded by Councilman Dolphridge. All right, so any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So I concur with Councilman Harris, it is an overreach. And average an overreach from my perspective. And I'm also concerned how a county feels they have the authority and the right to determine dictate how we manage our business, especially since that county gets an overwhelming majority of revenue from properties that are within the city of the city of Rocky Mountain. And we have proven ourselves consistently over decades and decades and decades to be the accountable stewards. We doing a good job managing our business. We heard a presentation today that from our retail developer that Rocky Mountain produces fifty percent of all retail revenue in our four county region. It happens within Nash and Edgcombe Counties, outstripping Wilson, outstripping Health Facts, we think. But we're not in competition necessarily, maybe co-opetition, maybe a better word. But we're targeted, and it's not right. And so I thank you for coming with your good to the purposes. I support your part of this resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments? If you're not all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. So if you recall, at the beginning of the meeting, we changed the order and things. So item thirteen is consideration of nine H on the consent agenda. And so it is a request to rescind resolution R dash twenty twenty-one fifty-one entitled, Resolution declaring official intent of the city of Rocky Mountain to reimburse expenditures paid for construction of fire station number two. Project was increased from four point one million dollars to eleven point three dollars. And resolution declaring official intent city to reimburse expenditures paid for construction of fire station number two. Expected maximum obligation is eleven point one approved in the annual budget. Expected financing to secure the stall in the North Carolina statute one sixty-eight dash twenty. And the resolution requirement of the United States Treasury. So the request is that we rescind the resolution R twenty twenty-one, and I'll accept the motion at that time to rescind that resolution. So. Councilman Dolphridge, and taken by Councilman TJ Walker. Is there a deeper discussion?
It's for me.
Yes, sir. Councilman Harris, I'll recognize you. I'll recognize you, Councilman. Okay.
Originally, I just want to make it clear, because I read this originally as, is the fire station number two was going to be eleven point one million dollars, but when we were presented with a four point one million dollar budget. Then it was corrected after I asked some questions. And this is only about where we're going in front of the L G C to ask for funding up to that amount. It does not mean that we're improving the construction cost to be eleven million dollars. It's only saying we're asking for L G C approval to get approval for financing. So I want to make that clear to everyone because I was not clear. So I think it could be easily construed the way I was thinking. And so I want to set the record straight for this audience, but for the audience that's on the floor on this as well. Councilman Harris.
Yes, Councilman Dolphridge, thank you for your information just indicated to the public. I just want to, the reason why I asked this to be pulled from the agenda, I realize this is only going to the L G C. But as we go and do these major construction projects, as I indicated in Durham, as I indicated in one of the budget working sessions, anything over five hundred thousand dollars to be construction wise is major. The council needs to be given information quarterly on how these projects are being funded. Are we within budget? Are we going to be under budget? Are we going to be over budget? And one of the ways that we can do our job is if we see that a project is going to come under budget, then we need to know how that excess money, if we approve something of a certain amount, we need to know how any excess monies will be put back into the city coffers. That way, we can have a good idea of excess monies that can perhaps be used for other purposes. We just need to be mindful of how these large construction projects are going to be financed in terms of expectations. I don't think there's any construction project recently that's probably come in under budget. I don't think there's any construction project recently that's probably come in under budget. And it's gonna be interesting to see going from four million one to eleven million one. Our hood, the total cost is going to be significantly below eleven one. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other conversation, comment? I have a motion on the floor, second, to rescind the resolution R twenty twenty-one fifty-one, uh, as read before, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like aye. Motion carries. So item fourteen was the consideration of the resolution authorized the following of the application for approval of an installment financing contract authorized by North Carolina general statutes, one sixty-eight dash twenty for fire station number two. Motion made by Councilman TJ Walker, seconded by, uh, Chuck Morris, Councilman Turner. Uh, is there need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like aye. Question carries. Item fifteen is item nine D. Nine D from the, uh, consent agenda. Uh, item is consideration of a quick plan D deed for point zero two three acre gap between the property line, Brook Rudy Gray Ayres and the municipal stadium to the Nash Board of Education. Uh, the request is that we pass a motion to authorize the mayor to per execute quick plan D. Uh, is there a motion?
And, uh, during our, uh, uh, during the public comment, when Mr. Harrington had approached us about the, uh, the deed to the, uh, property to municipal stadium, if we could, uh, delay this on this council meeting and ask our, uh, city attorney if he could give, uh, their process and, uh, through public record, how they can conduct it to be a process to see if actually that was done correctly and that those, uh, gentlemen were not discriminated against. I know it's, I was going with this, but I would just ask the council, uh, if we would do right by those gentlemen and if, if, if we see that, uh, has been done, that we would call that to the board attention by writing that on official letter.
So request table motion?
Yes.
All right, I request the tables are second, second made by Councilman Turner. Uh, all in favor, is there need for discussion to table? No special table, right, okay, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like aye. Item has been tabled, but that, there is no other business for pure. Hold on, hey, there is. All right, I need a motion, actually, consideration of, uh, two. To adopt the new resolution for the financing of, um, the official fire station. I thought we had done that, but, uh, question made by Councilman Mike, second by Councilman Turner. Is there need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like aye. All right, having all this pure for the city council, now drop.